Calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casavillas.
Your final roll?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Nattori?
Here.
Rovell?
Here.
Daraman.
Here. Clerk, read your final sunshine notice. We just lost video.
No, you screwed it up.
No.
You choked it up.
We just lost all the video here. I'm sorry, clerk. Clerk, read your final sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published on Thursday, December 22nd. Editions of the Bellevue Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted.
A copy of the final notice, meeting notice, has been posted on the Bellevue Town Hall voting board and copies are unfilled in the municipal clerk's office.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, I'd like to welcome you to our first, you know, it's our second meeting of January. First meetings in a month are always our combined conference regular meeting. With that said, any members of the council and/or professionals can put any items that they want on for discussions. And while you're here watching us or watching us online, this is really a conversation in and amongst the council and our professionals. If you do hear something that you're interested in, you can most certainly discuss that during the public participation portion of the meeting. So for right now, we're going to move ahead and we have only the deputy mayor, Mr. Graziano, has put previously items plural, several items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just want to give a couple of updates and then some asks from Anthony. So the townwide waters survey that we were supposed to go out to RP, we had two, do we have any status on that?
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. When you say water survey.
When I say water survey, we're talking about the flood zones and every, the floodwater zone.
Okay, so that actually as part of my report, I've asked Mr. Harris to be here tonight. So my timing is perfect with that question.
Great. Well, if that one is the pump for Fairway, we had conversation about that. I'm just trying to get an update on that.
So again, I'm going to defer to Tom and we've had some conversations, but during the manager's report, Tom will be able to at least address that briefly. That's okay with you?
Sure. St. Anthony's parking lot meters. Where are we standing with that? That's been gone those two, three years in existence. So we're losing revenue, so where does that stand?
Yeah, so we did, we did have some light negotiations, came up with a tentative agreement. We sent it over to the church and somewhere between the archdiocese and the church. So we're just waiting on them to give us the green light.
Okay, so just on the first three asks, once, I know it's been a conversation, but when are we going to get dates? It's all about dates and the finishing product. So not now, I don't need them now, but I'm just going to request dates on things I ask for when we're going to start seeing progress. So that's there. The walkthrough, we did a great job with the field and we had to do a final walkthrough. I, I know we talked about it a lot. It's been good weather. Same questions came up about pickleball field and then opening. So I'm just trying to understand when we're going to go ahead and have that conversation and go from there.
So, you know, technically the project is not complete. So the final walkthrough has not been, obviously we have not participated in that. As we get closer to the spring, we're going to have a date for the pickleball, which would address that. But as far as the actual final walkthrough, I know the weather has been great, but it's been unanticipated nice weather. So we, there was no way of planning that. I would probably say we'll probably be back out on the field probably sometime in March or April.
Okay, so then our maintenance and everything starts when that clock starts ticking when we sign off?
Absolutely.
Not for these past, these winter months?
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Yeah, did I drip it on that one?
Sure.
So we've had discussions about tearing down those old raggedy nets. I'm assuming that that's, as of me running on the track last week, it didn't happen yet?
The engineer, the field, he's going to help me get wood for the track.
To get?
They can't ride on the track.
You have to pull the wood on the track to get the deal.
Okay. That and yeah, I agree. We haven't really formally, we've been waiting 20 plus years for a track and we never really formally opened it. I know we're going to wait for spring for pickleball, although my last walkthrough, I don't think you were available that day, looks, appears that the pickleball courts may be getting turned because we're shy of foot.
That is affirmative.
So we're definitely doing that?
That's a perfect guess.
So it's the same envelope, same footprint as the asphalt that's there with the fence?
Yeah.
But we're just going to, because we are short one foot on one side.
That's, I heard complaints, so that's why I brought it to the pension and I haven't had a walkthrough since, so I'm just letting you know.
And the net, I did track that down. The net is, we were out there, it was Bobby, the engineer, was with us. We had tape measures on that. The net's fine.
Okay, good. Another one is the last ask, not the ask, but a follow-up guess. I did see emails go back and forth today about the software and the monitoring of it. I know we talked about it and I just want to get a firm date on monitoring our gas situation here in the town.
The purchase order was issued today, so as far as the actual firm date, I'll ask Bobby to call tomorrow to see if we can narrow it down to a date and we'll email that to you tomorrow as well.
Okay.
Also the recording of telephone lines. Is that the same capital?
No. Oh, two different ones.
Two different ones.
We were told last year the money was there, but no we didn't. Are we gonna, is that going to happen in our lifetime?
Can I defer to Tommy on that one?
Yes, you can.
Sure.
So we had four approved, four quotes approved. That is being worked on as we speak. We have to work with Verizon in getting the lines over to what they call SIP trunking and we're in the process of doing that. Another meeting with Verizon is the 11th. Then there's a timeframe to do that. Once the lines come over to SIP, then they can be configured within the device system here to make that happen.
So it's in the works.
Yes. So a couple of asks as we're having this open conversation. We do a lot of paving here in Bellevue because of work being done, which is all good by PSC and G and others. I did some homework on other towns with ordinance, other towns with ordinances and they do have in their ordinance for repaving of roads required. So when somebody comes in to do a job, PSC and G or something, they could go ahead and we can force them to pave the whole street, not half.
Tom Harris is here this evening, like I said before, and he actually has a, that's part of his report, that he has a copy of an ordinance that he would like to share with the council. So instead of doing what we do where they go from the seam to the curve, it's curve to curve. And I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, so I had this conversation with Tom at a planning board meeting and I just wanted to put it on record here. I didn't know that conversation happened, but it's something that we should look at because it's good for Bellevue as a whole.
We brought our A game, we definitely brought our A game to the meeting today.
Good. Okay, so that's repaving the roads. So the other thing, we want to jump back into the meters as I know we've placed meters on Washington Avenue, right? And we're going to continue to do it, but I would just like to know going forward, and I don't know if the council would like to know, we invest money, right? And we're never, you know, we do good things, but we're never told what it brings back, right? So putting new meters in, we said it's going to bring some revenue in because revenue is always good to know. Is there any way on a quarterly basis, as we roll this out, that we can start, and this is my ask, I don't know if the council wants to know about it, but just for knowledge, we knew also the town, what does it bring in? Where was it? We put new meters in? Can it come back? And it will come back, but just to make sure that what we did, we are getting, we're getting, you know, numbers back.
Yeah, so our finance team does put together, whether it's monthly or quarterly reports, it actually shows you cash on hand and it can, we can specifically zero into a line item specifically revenue generated by meters.
Okay.
Our figures were already increased.
Right, and I got you, chief. But again, is when we.
Got your figures.
I got you. Because as we go ahead and we make revenue, it should come back and go towards something to where we're going to pay something off, not just into a, just not into something. It should, it should come back for a purpose.
But having said that, we're not complete either. Still waiting for housing.
Right, and I just don't want to lose sight of it is my point. And I think we should put some teeth around it and so we all compare. Okay.
Pre new meters and current meters, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
Wait, oh, I heard meters.
I.
I email the chief all the time about, it looks absolutely awful, these meters with the heads ripped off.
Yep. They're not ripped off, something that they, we order new, they need the housings with them.
Can we put a bag on them? Can we make it look like someone didn't chisel it off with a screwdriver and rob all the money out of it? It just looks absolutely terrible. I see them all up and down Washington Avenue. It really looks terrible. Did we not, but did we not order enough? Like, how does that happen?
They're on back order. We have to order.
So why did we rip off the top unit, the coin one, and then just leave it empty?
Because they were supposed to fit. That's what we're told. That's why we, again, we got.
In most cases, they do fit.
Oh, I see. So we replaced 100% of them and then it fit right?
They were supposed to fit the original housings.
I understand that.
That turned out not to be true.
Ah, I didn't know that part.
So we had to, again, go to plan B and order new housings. For some reason, they're still using the COVID excuse the company, backwater from COVID.
But can we get like a bag out of service? It just, it looks really terrible. It looks like someone chiseled off the top to rob the money with a screwdriver.
And is the housing our fault or their fault?
It's a good question. I'd like to blame it on them, but yeah.
So why can't we, so why can't we meet in the middle and if we had to order new, are they going to pick up half the expense?
No.
I think it's a, okay, I just.
That's not going to, we tried that.
Okay. Also, as I tell you all the time, I do a lot of walking and we did a great job with the lightning. DPW did a great job along the high school. But what I did notice, because it was up not too long ago, that I think from a Bellevue light, it could be a hazard on how the extension cords roll and we spend a lot of money, right? Do we ever think about putting electrical boxes by those trees or making it nice? You know, when you, when you walk around, instead of just draping stuff, we can put money into our infrastructure. This is something safe. This is going down the road. Just something nice and neat. Makes it easier later I get, plug them in, roll up instead of draping and leaving things open. Just something to throw out as a, as a visual. It's an ask, but if it's a dollar figure that's above us, I understand it, but if you don't ask, you never know.
I'm sure we can get a price on that.
Okay, sorry about the long one and stuff, but this is stuff that we, I like to talk about here on my chest. Street cleaning. Okay? I know every street in Bellevue is not street cleaned because it hasn't been in the past. You know, some streets do, some streets don't, majority does. We do a good job doing it. But as I walk, I still see, after street cleaning is done, I still see on the sores, tons of debris on the corners, on the main streets, Washington Avenue, Graylock Parkway. I'm just giving you the main streets. Now, it's probably, streets may be down or whatever, but again, I love the service. When does, when does it really, does it make sense? Does it continue to make sense of all the money that we spend if anything or any questions on budget? Something to think about. This is a guy who walks around. I like the service. I'm not saying to do away with it. I'm saying, how do we make it better? Or how do we get the streets cleaner if we have all the material and it is being done? How come the stuff is still there three days later? And it's not just in one area, it's across the town. That's a visual. So I'm throwing that out there. I did mention in, so the team knows, I did mention on Union Avenue, I put it in GovPilot, that all the sidewalks on Union Avenue are horrible, horrible. Trees lift them up and I know Anthony and Bobby worked on it with the, can you give me an update, Ann?
Yeah, so we have a, are you talking about residential sidewalks?
Yep.
So we have a policy that's been in place, it's working. Matter of fact, we just, we were just able to accommodate another resident. We are not responsible for the sidewalks. We cannot be responsible for sidewalks. So what happens is if a sidewalk is uplifted by a tree, we take responsibility for the tree. We ask the homeowner to let us know when they, their contractor could lift up the slab. We go in, we grind out the, we grind out the stump.
What the?
And it's, and it's been working now and this has been in place for at least three years that I know of. And we just did another one just most recently. So that's, that's our game plan. So if a resident has a concern like that, that's how we address it. Again, we can't take responsibility for doing the slabs because there is some chance of the concrete cracking, breaking. But certainly the tree, we take full responsibility.
But if the resident doesn't report it and it sits there for four years like Union Avenue that I've been walking and almost felt a thousand times, who responsibility is it to get a hold of that homeowner and say, this is hazard? Is that something that we do?
One of our inspectors would have to ring the doorbell. If you give us the address, we will and just all basically say that it's in unsafe condition and it's their responsibility.
Can we get one of our property people to do it proactively rather than?
Sure. Yes, that's, that's what I did.
So you see, you could, you could tell Anthony and a notice could be sent to the property owner.
Well, that's exactly, exactly. So that's what I did. I put a, I put a GovPilot in for all of Union Avenue and I took pictures on all of them. I don't know if that second step was initiated. Did, did they go out and look at all of those streets, those sidewalks and initiate?
And I'll confirm that tomorrow.
Okay. And I'll pick you up on the next meeting. Thank you.
Can't wait. You got it. Thank you.
You just said, can't wait.
More to come. Thank you.
Yeah, we're out of time for tonight's meeting now. Okay, so next I'm going to agenda the report of the manager.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and certainly a happy new year. So our first meeting back. My manager's report somewhat abbreviated tonight because I did ask our town engineer to hit on certain topics that I normally would take, but I want the council here firsthand. But I'm going to start off tonight by a couple of introductions. As everyone knows, everyone knows that tonight is our clerk's last meeting after 31 years. I know the council's been happy to say about that. So my first introduction that I want to say is Albert Cabrera. Albert Cabrera is a seasoned municipal clerk and I think he's going to be a great fit for our community. And he certainly, you know, after 31 years, he's certainly, you know, going to have to come to work with his A game because we, you know, we are going to miss Kelly. But I do want to introduce Albert. I also want to just take this time to introduce two other people. First, a shout out to Jack Kavanaugh. Jack is Kelly's son, came to his, his mom's last meeting. But what you don't know is Jack is a sophomore at Carville High School. He's just finished his second year on the football team, two undefeated seasons. Okay, so there's a lot of pressure on you two to continue this week. You're a junior next year and they're going to be counting on you. So I know the football coach, so, but good luck with that. And also another shout out and it's always great to see former deputy chief Richie Kavanaugh. Again, it's Kelly's husband, but nice to see you, Rich. So welcome. So we welcomed Albert, we welcomed Jack and Richie. And now I just want, I know we all get the opportunity. We had a little cake this afternoon and we do have cake tonight, so please everyone join and have cake with Kelly tonight too. My, someone might deploy words to Kelly who's, you know, thank you for making my almost five years very easy. You never said no to me and I said that today in front of everyone. Every time I picked up the phone and asked a question or missed a deadline or forgot to do something, Kelly didn't really know what the word no was and she always just said, yes, 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 I'll take care of it. So besides wishing you the best in your next chapter, I certainly want to say thank you. And you are a great asset to the community of Bellevue, so I want to say thank you. Those are my deploying words. I am going to ask our new clerk, one of his first official actions is to read something into the record, if that's okay. Yeah.
So Kelly, this is a proclamation from the U.S. House Representative, the 11th Congressional District of the great state of New Jersey, Kelly Kavanaugh. He had known that undersigned member of the United States Congress, the Honorable Mickey Sherrill, of the 11th Congressional District of the great state of New Jersey honors Kelly Kavanaugh upon the occasion of her retirement in deep gratitude for her dedicated service to the township of Bellevue, where she has served as a principal clerk, deputy clerk, and township clerk and has worked tirelessly on behalf of the community for over three decades. Signed, Mickey Sherrill.
Nice.
There's a personal note from the Congresswoman.
Nice. So continuing with my report, I'm going to refer it to the council, hand it over to Tom Harris. There's a couple of items that we have discussed over the last several meetings. Tommy might want to stand up if you do.
And he could touch upon and is certainly obviously available for questions.
Okay, I was just going to go over a few things. First is we just finished our semi-annual lead copper testing, sampling, and we passed everything again. So it's probably been five semi-annual testing periods that we passed, so things are improving. And a lot has to do with Newark's got a new water operator who's made a lot of improvements to the treatment plant up in Plodnick and to their system. So whatever improvements Newark makes, it only helps us. The 2022 road program started up again, took the holidays off and so we're finishing the water line on Linden. There's a new water main going in on Newcombe, a new water main going on Springer. There's 17 streets being done. We're going to replace all the, any lead services we find on all those streets. So that's all on projects, probably a six-month, at least a six-month project. We're receiving some bids for valve exercise and hydrant exercising on Thursday. This is an important project. I need to know what valves and hydrants are working, which isn't because the DEP is pushing us to go, go into a, what they call a uni-directional flushing program. And you need to have operating valves to do that. Right now, we just open hydrants and flush, but a uni-directional forces the water only go in one direction and it cleans the lines a lot better. You won't get as much colored water after you flush and everything. So I need to know what needs to be replaced so I can get it to, get that uni-directional flushing program on. And it's, once you have everything working, there's programs, you could buy that program and tell you what valves to close. It's really pretty cool, but I, we got to get to that point. We received bids and awarded a contract for the lead service line replacements and I'm just waiting for the DEP to approve a contract to show over who is the little bidder. They're a very good contractor. They just did a couple of projects in, by the hospital for us and they're, they're very good, so I can't wait to work with them again.
Hey, Tom, on that, where are we number wise as far as, are we, I'm assuming we're getting closer to the federal mandate, which was what, 10% or?
Yeah, we're not even, I mean, that, that's 7%. That was 7%. They want you to start replacing 10% a year. I mean.
But I thought we were going to hit that, that 400 number and then we were done.
We'll hit, no. They want you to replace 10% a year. What we're doing now is a penalty for failing lead copper years ago, basically.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting, so for those 400 services that we're doing, I need to get DEP permission so we could get a contract out to show over and we could start that project. That's part of the infrastructure bank is giving us low interest loans for that.
But they're, just so I'm clear, there were two different things. There was the federal mandate that said about 400 and then the governor came up with his plan.
That was the 10%.
Right, that's two different things.
Yeah, yes.
So I'm talking about the federal one, probably.
Well, that's what the, the Scholder project is to do the 400. That's the 7% that we need for the federal, that's in the federal regulations.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't, okay.
More good news, we got a $250,000 CDBG grant for 23 and a $688,000 DOT grant for this year. And then Councilman Graziano talked about the ordinance for paving current to curb. I, I gave him the copy of the construction ordinance. We just got probably 50% of the roads paved current to curb by the water company and public service, so.
So Tom, with that said, what do we need to do?
We need to incorporate that in your ordinance.
No, that's right. So with the work that's in the pipeline right now, can we, can we get this ordinance and we'll, well, if we get the ordinance in, Steve, will, will we be able to, the work that's not done yet, will they be able to do the whole road once the ordinance is in?
Yes. If you get the ordinance in, if you get it in before they start work, you should be able to, they have to follow the ordinance.
I can, as long as I'm asked to do it, I can have it done, like the first reading next time and then the second meeting.
They say no.
So maybe two weeks. Publication wise to get it on for the first meeting in February, but at worst, the second meeting in February.
So can I ask you to do that?
Just, just me and myself and Anthony, we bet with the gas company. They don't have anything really planned immediately, but probably 24 they'll be back.
But we should have something in place.
Oh, no, you should.
We wouldn't have all of this stuff on trial.
They also won't do it in February.
Okay, good. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, now you were talking about the Fairway.
There was two things, there was two things at Fairway happened. Fairway flooded, on Fairway Avenue and there was pumps. And I think, I think Councilman Roosevelt, I think Councilman Roosevelt pumps up a long time ago and they're not working. When they get submerged or whatever happens, we have a monthly company come in or quarterly, they give us recommendations, so forth and so on. That, from what I was told, when we were going through all this with the people on Fairway, it needed to be addressed.
Now, that, that in-ground pumps, the lift station used to be replaced. We've had a question about it. So I mean, we, myself and Willie, we looked into that a while ago and we were going to, Public Works was going to do some of the work with, when Dominic Holley left.
Right, so.
That expertise left, so I think the best thing to do is to get someone to do plans and specs and go out the bid for that project.
So whatever we need to do, I recommend, I don't know, on behalf of the council.
I agree.
We, we, so looking at that.
I could take care, I mean, now the flooding, that's a whole different issue.
Right, so Gabby, if I may, Gabby, this was the whole, what's the, the name of it?
It's the townwide study.
I'm sorry?
Townshipwide stormwater engineer study, very similar to what Blue Bill has already started and not.
And we brought this up, God knows, last year and.
We went out.
We, we, we went out and we received.
And it stopped.
We just had to award it, I think.
We have to sell it. Who submitted the bids in the.
Me and somebody else.
Right, but I don't know, it's time elapsed, that they have to resubmit them. So my point is I want to start moving. I think we as a town should start moving on it because we're behind just in general and we should start actually, we come out with these good ideas and let's rock and roll, let's get it moving.
Put it off for the next meeting, award it.
It might last, I don't know.
Too long. So resolution next meeting, go back out.
Can we go back to, can we still support that process? I've done it federally.
All right, so go back out. Somebody go out. Somebody go out.
Just put up, do RPL or RQL for that.
Thank you.
Eliminate the flooding in, in Fairway, I think that's, that's a huge project.
Well, at least it's a step in the right, it's something to help, right? I mean, come on, they're taxpayers, we bought it off, we, we should do the right thing.
No, I agree. That's all I have. Unless someone else.
Thank you.
No, thanks, man. Thank you, Tom.
So we're just gonna deviate a little bit from the regular meeting for an official presentation to our longtime friend and clerk, Ms. Kelly Nash. Actually, I knew her 25 years ago as Kelly Nash. She's been now our clerk for 20 years, employee for 31. And I'm not sure if she's had more mayors or managers. It's not supposed to be that way, it's just nothing but a few over 20 years, but.
She's had 11 managers.
She's had 11 managers and 100 mayors.
And I'm your sixth, right?
Yes.
Good answer.
She's still your boss, by the way.
Good answer.
But yeah, so it's been, I actually, I know that we have many longtime serving council members here. Some are 16 and 20 years, been with Kelly. As a 25-year-old councilman elected in 2000, I had inherited Kelly in 2002 or '03 when you became clerk for Mary Lou. So I actually served on the council under Mary Lou Hood, our prior longtime standing clerk, who trained Kelly. And then I, or I should say Kelly got me in 2000, when she officially became clerk in 2003. So 20 years, it's been a very good career, this place. I can't look at Karen. Kelly is synonymous with this place. She's in the fabric of this place, her work ethic, her dedication is unparalleled. She's been a professional in her industry. She's very well-respected, not only among her industry, but among her colleagues and her community and obviously her townspeople. She works very closely with the mayor and council. Besides the manager, we probably have the most interaction with her or her office. It's not an easy job, especially as it's transitioned in the last 10, 15 years with Oprah requests and change of laws and everything else. It's not an easy job. The nice part about it, though, is that I do remember a conversation with Kelly. When I first got elected in 2018 as mayor, and she sat me down in the office and said, "I don't know how many years I have left." And she lasted five years before then. And you know what, though? She's gonna be missed, it's gonna be tough shoes to fill. We're very happy to have the staff that are now gonna be supporting her, whether it's Albert in that office and Jackie supporting him in that office. We're grateful for that. But you know what? Kelly's young, she has four more football games to go watch, at least two more years of high school and then college. And I know from talking to her, she wants to travel a bit. So there's no doubt about that, that we wish her the best. She absolutely deserves the best. So without further ado, we have a, I'm sure the last thing you want is a proclamation. You spent your entire career typing these things up. Right, so if you have a table that's uneven at home, you could just put the uneven level of table off. But we had to, and by the way, Kelly, you have the nice frame. Not already got the nice frame. We have a higher budget than Congress does, because Congress just gave you a folder. Don't forget that. Resolved by the mayor municipal council and township of Belville, whereas Kelly A. Kavanaugh began her career as a principal clerk in the township of Belville. And whereas Kelly was promoted to deputy clerk on January 6th, 1994. And on January 14th, 2003, Kelly assumed her responsibility as township clerk. And whereas during her 31-year career in Belville and 20 years as municipal clerk, Kelly has earned the respect and admiration of all who know her. Her dedication and commitment to the township of Belville are standards which we'll all strive to achieve. And whereas Kelly and her husband Richard together have a son, John Joseph. And whereas on February 1st, 2023, Kelly will be retiring after 31 years of dedicated service to the township of Belville. And whereas, on behalf of the mayor and the township council, we want to express our sincere appreciation to Kelly for her loyalty, outstanding, outstanding career and unwavering dedication and service to the township of Belville. We wish her many years of happiness and good health. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the municipal council of the township of Belville, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Kelly A. Kavanaugh's long-serving dedication and service to the township of Belville and its residents be hereby recognized. And be it further resolved that the gratitude of this community be hereby extended to Kelly for her 31 years of service to the township of Belville. Congratulations. We have postcards every time she travels. You better cry as much when I retire.
I cry at weddings.
I do too, for no reason. So I've said my, basically my closing remarks to our clerk. I'm gonna open up to council, starting with deputy mayor.
Kelly, what can I say? I mean, I'm here six years, five years, but I know you will like it. Our families, our fathers go back the wrong way. And just enjoy your retirement, enjoy your family. You both are retired now, you have a whole bunch of time on your hands, got pleasures, health, wealth and happiness.
Councilman Zari?
Kelly, I wish you the very best. You were a fantastic clerk. You were extremely professional, you knew how to deal with the public, with the council. You were always there and you will be greatly, greatly missed. You are certainly a part of this building. And Jack, where's Jack? You should be very, you should be very proud of your mother. She's very proud of you, she talks about you all the time, all the time. And Kelly, we're just gonna, you know, I don't usually say this to too many people, but I'm gonna really miss you.
Councilman Cazarelli?
Yeah, Kelly, our little inside joke that we've been in town all week, and I'll tell everyone here, but you cried the first day, I was sworn in. And now you're gonna cry your last day. So for us, our little stint started and ended with crying, but everything in between has been great. Congrats, enjoy your retirement, it's so well-deserved. Go travel with and without Richie. We are gonna miss you.
Councilman?
Can I stop crying, please? Kelly, number one, thank you. From when I was a freshman to today, and I am a senior now, you've been a great clerk, your advice has been invaluable. You've been a mentor, more than I've been a friend. And you know, I think you missed one thing about Jack, who's part of the state championship team. I don't know if you said that.
No, I said two years in a row.
They're undefeated.
Two years in a row?
They're undefeated, yeah, but they won the state championship. Second year, oh, I thought you meant they were undefeated two years. I didn't hear the state championship. Did I miss that? I didn't hear the state championship. Didn't hear the championship. Sorry, but anyway, congratulations to you, your family, God bless you. Enjoy your time away from this insanity.
Do we still have councilman Devenia with us?
Yes, we do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kelly, I am so sorry I can't be physically there. But as I'm watching, I just, I'm happy that I'm not there, because I would be also bawling, I know. I'm just so grateful for these past five years. I've had the opportunity to work together. Truly grateful for your guidance as I came in as a brand-new council, elected, and just really understanding how everything works. It has been pivotal, your help and your support in this process. And I hope that this new stage in your life has as much success and as much joy with a lot less stress. And wishing you the best, congratulations, you'll be missed. But we are so happy for you to serve this next step in your life. And have a fantastic time, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, we do have to move along with the business portion of our meeting. So the next topic on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So same format, just covering quick, real quick, some past events. The police department in December had their first-ever pack-a-police car event. I'm told that was an overwhelming success. And that food was distributed to a local food bank. We had, we actually, before Three Kings Day, we had a Three Kings promo day, which was the Monday before Three Kings Day. I just want to thank Camacho Floats, he's our float vendor. He graciously donated his services that evening. The video from that night is up to 4,500 views. So that was a great day. The next day, we had a Three Kings gift wrapping party. And again, this is all done by volunteers. We don't really buy gifts. The donations come in as presents and then we couple together volunteers, serve them some cold pizza, and they wrap their little hearts away for a couple hours. So I want to thank all the volunteership today. And then Friday's Three Kings event was an overwhelming success again. I want to thank the Belville PBA for being a sponsor, the Belville Republican Club being a sponsor, even Forest Hill being a sponsor. When I say sponsors, they either donate gifts or monetary donations. I want to thank Jackie for taking the lead on this event. Those are all our Hispanic leaders that come out to all three of those events to make sure that we can put on a really nice event. And I think it's a great event, it's easy to run, maintain, it's a great event. On December 20th, here in the mayor's office, I did welcome the Middle School National Honor Society. Anytime I have the children in town hall is great. I think the chief and I have a date or an appointment coming up with another school in a couple of weeks or so, but it's always great. So that was a great event, we saw that, that's on social media. Upcoming events, there's not much going on, January, February, but we do have Martin Luther King Day this coming Monday. Just today, flyers up on social media. And our township website, it will be next Monday, January 16th at noon. We do a quick flag raising ceremony, a small little ceremony outside. I'm sort of looking forward to that. And on January 27th, the Belville Civic Association is having a hoedown murder mystery homicide, something along those lines. So please check social media for that. News, as you heard from Tom Haritz, our lead line water sampling came out. And at least one of the samples that I saw showed no lead line that was noticeable or actionable. So that's good, we are, we have to turn the corner on that finally. In late December, we probably had the most ever letters to Santa. They were diligently read by various volunteers. And every child received a personal response from Santa and to our helpers. Today, just today, Gabby's here in the room, but just today, we received a $10,000 Clean Communities Grant for Single Use Plastic Program. They don't, they don't throw that money around, everybody. And if and when you get it, it's a $5,000 grant. Well, guess what? Belville got 10. So that's a great, it's a great program, but unfortunately, we do it that. Congrats to our home decorating contest winners for Christmas. Last week, I was able to have the pleasure of swearing in three, three members, I should say, one new member of the Belville Book of Education. Just today, the governor's office announced that the anchor program that was supposed to end December 31st and that was supposed to end January 31st has now been extended to February 28th. So again, I urge all residents to actually take part in that. Alternate side of street parking is still suspended until spring. And that's it for my mayor's report. This is technically, we're calling this the first meeting in a month. Even though we had a special meeting, so again, not only is it the combined conference regular meeting, but we also do committee reports. I know we heard from deputy mayor before, but I'll start with deputy mayor. Anything specific other than what we discussed?
None.
Councilman Atari, Councilman Cazarelli?
Yeah, well, real quick, I should've said it under the manager's report. But up at the dog park, can, could we, I got a couple of requests and it is a good idea. Could we get a webcam with a live feed up there? You think that's possible if we, yeah, if we get it from the high school, from the stadium? Yeah, because I know a lot of people like to see if there's other dogs there, either because they want to bring their dog there, because there's dogs there, or they don't want to bring their dog because there's dogs there.
It'll also be good for surveillance, you know.
Yeah, and that's, you know.
And whoever drives through the dog park again will know.
I'll get you a, an answer.
Thank you. And then also, could we?
We got it without the camera.
Good point, sir. Could we set up a meeting with our CFO? I know he's been doing a great job with all of our old stuff, the old accounts, reconciling everything. Could we reconcile the old grant accounts? I know that's a little bit separate, different than stuff that's in the budget. I mean, going back two, three, four years, seeing what's left in some of the grants, some that haven't been spent, whatever.
I think he's worked on it.
Is that it? Because I have something I want to add to it. Since we're getting internet for dogs, can we also get internet at the senior building? The only reason why I'm asking is one, we could then stream movies for them. But more importantly, I think we can then finally do swipe card access there. Every time we need that building, everybody tries to scurry around to find a key.
So if I may?
I have fiber there.
So if I may, I just drafted an email to Anthony based on all of Comcast here. In the process of drafting it with recommendations. So it is including what you're requesting for it to town of Belville.
Yeah, so I mean, every time we need the building, who's got a key?
It's to be addressed.
Equally important, we use that as an emergency show. Yeah, people do relocate there. And then we can stream movies for them, we can do movie nights there, we can do all kinds of fun stuff there. Okay, great, Councilman Roosevelt? Councilwoman Devenia?
Nothing at this moment, thank you.
Perfect, next on the agenda, a couple of minutes.
Well, you want to do them together?
Sure.
Combined conference and regular meeting of April 12th and special meeting of January 3rd.
Motion.
You know what, we're gonna separate, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Do the first one?
First one, April 12th, 2022.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Devenia?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The special meeting of January 3rd.
Make a motion, second.
The motion made in second, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Devenia?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Take no bar.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Take no bar. Communications.
A letter received from Mayor Melham appointing Christine Lamparrello as available public library and information center trustee. B letter received from Mayor Melham appointing Ralph Tunis as a Belville Public Library Information Center trustee. And C letter received from Mayor Melham appointing Nelson Herrera as a Belville Public Library and Information Center trustee. D, 2023 annual meeting notice from second regular meeting. E letter of resignation received from Brian Vanda, class four member of the Belville Planning Board. F letter of resignation received from Jack McQuarle, class two member of the Planning Board. G letter received from Mayor Melham appointing Brian Vanda as a class two member of the Planning Board. And H letter received from Mayor Melham appointing Jack McQuarle as the mayor's designee to the Belville Planning Board.
Thank you. Did we ever get the each before?
No. No. No, we've got each before.
Ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
令数一，命令给 mayor and council， potential Belville county investments in Jersey adopting the 605-609 Washington Avenue redevelopment plan.
Make a motion for introduction.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made in second, introduction, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Devenia?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Make a motion, second.
We have a motion made in second, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Devenia?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
And three, orders to amend the revised general ordinances in the township of Belville, chapter eight dash two point two entitled Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Motion for introduction, second.
We have a motion made in second, introduction, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Devenia?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Orders on the table, same. Okay, need a motion of a public comment, Nick.
Make a motion, second.
We have a motion made in second of a public comment, and clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Devenia?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. So the public commenting portion of the meeting is now open. Would just raise your hand, I'll call upon you, Ms. Frantantoni. And I just ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Phyllis Frantantoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. Resolution number seven, now approving to put a cannabis-growing facility on Washington Avenue. As you all know, I've been against all this.
That, Ms. Frantantoni, it's on Doralon Street, just the, you know.
Doralon Street?
Yeah, 21 in the Valley. That's the only part of town that's allowed to be in.
Okay, well, that's near, that's near school nine, isn't it?
No, Doralon Street, of course, it's a street from Kmart.
Okay. But I think that you should not approve it because we're gonna have a lot of problems with that, with the drugs and everything going on. I have a file here, this thing, that when I asked you not to approve it coming into our town and told me you had to do it, because if you didn't, the state would come in and make you do whatever they tell you to do with approving. I have at home what you said.
It's not what I said, but that's okay.
All right, all right, maybe you didn't put it in those words, but that's the way it came across. I want to know what happened to all these towns that didn't approve it and still don't have it in their towns. What was the roundback action?
There's not one of them. If you didn't approve retail, the state law says that you can't prevent somebody the state law says that you can't prevent somebody from getting delivery service into your town or using it in your town. But what I said to you, the meeting that you're discussing is the fact that even if we say no, it's still going to be here because it's the law of the state. We cannot prevent you from ordering a delivery service to getting it on your porch. We can't prevent you from sitting in your backyard and consuming it. We can't do that.
I understand that.
All this does is allows us to get 2% of the revenue now.
All right. Well, you're worried about us getting the money in.
I'm not worried about, but I'm answering your question.
Worried about the kids and about who's going to be taking it. Because first of all, what I think is by you approving it, you are helping people with the drugs. And every one of you who votes to approve and let this come in are enabling drugs in this town. It's, you're never going to get drugs off the streets. I saw up in Verona, a person get hit from a Belville kid and got killed. I'll never forget the guy's eyes sitting there while his sister, who was pregnant, got killed because a kid was on drugs. Started with weed and went on. So don't tell me this stuff is not a stepping stone. So please do not approve them with that facility down in the valley.
Thank you. Anybody else? Drew?
I'll set my timer. I just hit it.
If it don't?
Mario Charles, 95 Bell Street. First of all, going back to Kelly, just want to let you know, I still remember January 6th, 1994, the governing body I served on. And I remember making a comment to you. It sticks out in my head. I said, Kelly, do you want the job or not? And that's when you became the deputy clerk. But it only shows we picked the right person at the time. And enjoy your retirement. Going back to you, I'm going to ask questions. I'm not going to wait for answers. January 6th special meeting, just want to know what was so important about that? That's number one. And I also see that's your, I believe that was your property, but you're also voting on the resolution today, not you in particular. School number one property, I understand is being turned back to the township. My question is, what are you going to do with the property? I hope you're going to sell it and not give it away. Number three, I noticed on this Three Kings flyer, and I just hope you could make a correction for next year and include other countries. Because I looked up on the internet, did a little work here. It says January 6th, an important day for many cultures around the world, Spain, France, Latin America, Europe, celebrate Three Kings Day. They all have their own variety of traditions. In Poland alone, it's a national holiday. Philippines celebrate, Italy, Czech Republic, Russia, Greece, Bulgaria, Spain, Latin America, Portugal, Germany, Mexico, Nicaragua. It's a tradition that began in the Middle Ages. And I just hope you can just revise the flyer to say.
My social media mentioned specifically Italy. And if we had a 48% of the population was from Bulgaria, I can guarantee you we would have a stand next year.
You missed the point. All I said is that you can include the words Europe and change whoever put this flyer together. I mean, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for anything else.
Trying to use that word.
Include other parts of the world. You don't have to specifically name them.
I would like to get volunteers from those portions of the world as well.
I would take that day, but it was my birthday and I'd rather stay home.
Got you.
Resolution, I just want to, I already mentioned, all right. Resolution number five, is it called for a three-year extension? I wish you could just tell me what that's about. Resolution five, six, and eight, what are they about? Cannabis, you said that's on Girollin Street?
Yeah.
Like one of those building, right?
Yes.
I mean, because there's not much parking. Do they have their own parking lot? Or where are they going to park there?
I believe they have their own parking lot.
Okay, because I'm not, you know, I just pictured, is it where the hair salon lives or something, possibly?
I think it's right by the motorcycle place.
I'm just trying to figure that out, which spot that is. Okay, I see we hired a new clerk here, Mr. Alberto Cabrera. And I assume this position, as usual, is not, has not been advertised?
I believe it was, so.
Really? Oh, my God, you've got to be kidding me.
Your assumptions are wrong.
Because the last dozen, the last dozen positions were not advertised.
That's not true.
Oh, yeah, I always ask you that question. Go check the records.
Because you say it, doesn't make it true, Mary.
No, 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 no. You don't advertise it. I remember, I'm not going to go there.
I don't do the advertising. That's a manager's job. CFO was advertised.
And now the other question is, I know in the past, the clerk, whether it was clerk or deputy clerk, was always renewed every year. Why is it three years? Suppose you don't like Mr. Cabrera's performance in a year, what are you going to do?
You're stuck with him. That's the law.
You're stuck with him for three years?
That's the law.
So if you could answer my questions here.
I did answer a few, sure.
Go ahead.
Let's see, you started with January 6th special meeting. I believe the manager did a good job of answering that question on that day. When a special request is made, if the applicant has a deadline or something, the township can accommodate that. I believe there was a deadline for this particular applicant. The township made every effort to accommodate that. School number one property, I think you're very well misinformed. That's a small sliver of land that was basically, should have been transferred, but was a mistake that was not being transferred 10-plus years ago when that happened. So that land will go to the person that initially bought the land 10 years ago. When I wasn't here, by the way, but many members of this governing body were and were responsible for that deal.
So just real quick, so he's going to get it back for nothing?
He already bought it. It just wasn't transferred correctly.
But was the lease and bounce description correct when he bought it?
It was the entire block and there are many blocks in there. We believe it was transposed. The Board of Education attorney actually wrote a letter saying that it was a mistake and it was probably mistransposed. What else? You mentioned about the three-year, the three-year resolution. I believe that's going to be tabled tonight. That's going to be tabled tonight.
Which resolution is that?
The three-year extension.
Oh, the three-year extension, that's number five, right?
Yep.
And then with six?
Six, Roche, no, development plan.
Six and eight, yes.
Six and eight. Eight, I can tell you is the Great Lawn.
Okay.
Eight is the Great Lawn.
What are they doing there?
They're not doing anything. We're going to go after that for eminent domain so we can have the properties open space.
Okay.
I'm assuming you'll agree with that. And then number six, I'll let the manager answer.
Six and eight.
I just answered eight.
Oh, no, six, go ahead.
The Starbucks. Yeah. That's Starbucks.
The what?
That's the Starbucks that's open right there.
Oh, that's the Starbucks. Okay, you answered my question. Is that what you did there?
Thank you, Mary.
And what's number eight?
I did eight. I'll do it. Do you want me to do it again? I did eight. That is the, that's the Great Lawn.
Okay, move on again. Okay. I'll just follow in the numbers, but you were.
Got you.
Okay, no problem.
Anybody else for a public comment? Mr. Frantantoni.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate Kelly on your retirement. I know her, Kelly Nash, long time ago. Very competent, very responsive, and non-political clerk. I thank her, I wish her a very happy and healthy retirement. Enjoy it, Kelly. You deserve it. You got the, there was a redevelopment aid ordinance created two months back at the beginning of the year. And I asked if it was going to one of your Better Belville friends. I gave the initials. You didn't answer me. Then subsequently, you told me you canceled that position.
You're incorrect.
You're incorrect. That was the economic development coordinator.
Right.
Well, you're incorrect because that's not the job the person has. We created economic development coordinator, then we deleted it. Then we created a planning.
Thank you for interrupting me because you answered my question before I even asked it. So you admitted that you hired him. That was going to be my next question.
We don't hire hires here, Mr. Frantantoni.
All right.
The question was about economic development coordinator.
All right, so you got another Belville, better Belville friend of yours on the payroll. Are any of the Belville guys able to hold a private sector job? That's a question, right? So keep appointing all your friends to these jobs.
I don't make these points, Mr. Frantantoni.
Come on, don't play games with me. Now, in regards to marijuana stuff, another, we got these growing facilities all over. It is really a problem. They walk in the avenue stoned. Down by laundry, one girl, she's always stoned on the avenue, sit there. I've thrown her out several times. She stinks up the place with the marijuana smell.
Do you know where they're getting?
I called the police. The police were there and put her out one day. And they said you can't come down.
And that's.
I got another guy, come in there, he's sitting there smoking. I got no smoking.
Mr. Frantantoni, do you know where they're getting it from? Because we don't have anything open yet.
The what?
Do you know where they're getting it from? Because we don't have anything open yet.
I'm telling you what's going on with it. You're going to exacerbate the problem when they do open. But I'm telling you what's going on in Belville from a firsthand perspective. Another guy comes in there, throws his clothes in the dryer, and he's sitting on the, my chair is lighting up. I said, you've got to get out of here. No smoking here. He said, hey, man, you don't understand. Weed is legal now. Man, you want one? I said, get out of here. He gave me some trouble.
In San Diego or Belville?
He was giving me some trouble, so I showed him my son's littering bat that I keep in the back room. And he left. A couple of days later, that girl's back again. So stoned, on the folding table, just passed out and all that. We got another one, another guy who walks up and down, so stoned. He looks at signs on the windows and he's looking at them, but he's preaching the gospel as he's reading.
Mr. Frantantoni, we haven't created that problem. You should be complaining to the state legislature who put these laws. We didn't create this problem.
Thank you, Mayor Melham. My wife and I went to a senate hearing and testified on it. We've done all that. We've called on legislative, we've sent them letters.
We can't change that law.
What I'm telling you is you people are exacerbating the problem.
Nothing's open yet.
Now, a couple of you voted no on these things. I hope you vote no tonight. This is crazy what's going on in this country. I mean, we're legalizing all this stuff. We got a bunch of potholes all over the place. Nobody knows what the hell they're doing. It's destroying the quality of life in America, not only Belville. So think twice when you approve these idiotic things. Now, Mr. Hayakona took the, spent his time, he's a very busy town manager, but he took the time to write the public service, to ask them how they fill potholes because he thought he was going to get me, which he didn't. Because nowhere in that letter did it say you fill with gravel. But I want to give you some pictures, only four of them, of the water replacement service lines, how you repair those potholes. This is only four, if you want. I don't want to waste my ink. I can give you another dozen or 15 of them, pictures and all that. So you could use them when you apply for your next job. You could say, this is how I oversaw the repairing of streets in Belville. You see what happens? They just, you fill with gravel, it's like I told you. It settles and settles. And what do they do? Look at the pictures. They go back and they put a two-foot circle of asphalt. Another couple of weeks, it settles. On the other side, they go put a, look at those pictures. Are you proud of that repair of roads in your town? It's a disgrace.
I do need to wrap up, Mr. Frantantoni, in a minute.
Yes, and the final thing is, what's going on with the Great Lawn?
Just explain it, Mr. Frantantoni.
It's up for tax lanes and somebody bought a tax lane. When is the town finally going to take that over from here on out?
Five minutes ago, I just explained that Mr. Drew's resolution number eight is to hire a title company to take the next step.
Well, I just went back and checked and confident in Kelly, when I opened it five years ago, I wanted to know all the legal things, only partial. I got 40. I received 40 invoices from lawyers that the township paid to defend that property. And I totaled just those 40s, there's over 100. Just those 40s was 120,000 in legal fees. I have every one of them ordinances. So we got, these lawyers, what the hell are they doing? We keep paying these lawyers to take back.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantoni.
And all they do is writing invoices we're paying for.
Since I've been here for five years, we have not paid one penny legal fees for this. Thank you.
Tell you what goes on, and I have them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else for public comment?
And welcome, Mr. Cabrera to Belville.
It's pleasure.
Good evening. From our flash main, three Main Street. First of all, Happy New Year. Second of all, to Kelly, congratulations on your retirement. Aren't you going to miss this fun? Come on. Look, look what the fun you're leaving with. Good, good luck to you. God bless. Travel. Enjoy the world. On resolution number 10, I know that is built and finished. What, can you explain that a little more to me? What are you guys doing on that one?
Mr., either the attorney or the town manager answer that one.
Sixty-five Main Street. I can answer it. So they have a performance bond. Now that it's completed, the performance bond gets released. So they don't have to carry the performance bond anymore. And now they'll have a maintenance bond for the next two years for maintenance if something comes up.
Okay.
So that's what that's for.
And still no, no takers on that property, huh?
We wouldn't really know at this point who the tenants would be.
Ah.
You could have them in place. We really wouldn't know yet.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Happy New Year, first of all, to the entire council. I just wanted to start off with congratulations to Ms. Kavanaugh on 30 years of service, more than 30 years to the council. And I just want to say, Jackie Guauhan, you did a great job with that event. That was amazing. I really appreciate your work. And in terms of the Three Kings event, as always, you did a really great job. And I think really important point is that people do bring up a lot is, you know, in our township, it really does mean a lot to people, especially the Hispanic community, to see events like that. For many years, we did not have those type of events, so it does mean a lot to the community. And I know you had a promotional, what was it, with the, a float? A promotional event, and you invited Hispanic leaders going forward. I don't know if it's a question for association or to township, but I would like to be invited to that as a Spanish leader, and I appreciate it. And yeah, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and thank you again so much for the event.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening. Michael Sheldon, 47th and Light Street. First question, actually, I'm going to move through the chair to Mr. Haritz. When he was giving a quick rundown of water mains being replaced, he mentioned Linden. But I think he meant Little Street. They're right around the corner from me as of today, turning up. Is it Little Street? That is Little. Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. In regard to resolution number seven, dealing with the third proposed cannabis cultivation facility in Belville. The original document posted Friday on Civic Web, the iCompass system, the address indicated in that, unless I misread it, it said 176 Belmont Avenue. Now you're saying Girollin, so I don't know, did I misread that? Or could you just later on clarify, double-check that address? But even more importantly, the entity associated with this cannabis cultivation facility facility has the name Growing Buddies LLC. And as you know, I regularly check all these things, I go to the state's business registration, this entity is not known, does not have a current business registration. The other two cannabis cultivation LLCs are registered, that was Cembra, which you approved on November seventh, and the first one, Bud's Lightyear, which you approved on June fourteenth. Those two LLCs have registries with the state. This entity, Growing Buddies, is completely unknown, and I checked at five thirty today. Even more importantly, if you go to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission website, CRC, the other two have conditional approvals. This doesn't have a conditional approval either, so how can you rightfully award, give your tacit approval to an entity that doesn't seem to have gone through the basic legal procedures to become a registered business in the state of New Jersey? I think, you know, you, you can defer to the judgment of council, but I think you need, out of necessity, to table this until you can get to the bottom of this LLC's registration, if it in fact exists.
I think the state will handle that.
Well, well, I knew you were gonna just pass it on to, on to the state, but you have some culpability, some liability.
This is the first step in the process.
I'm bringing it to your attention, I'm bringing it to your attention, so please, it's not gonna harm anything for you to table this for two weeks and, and investigate on your own.
Thank you.
You've got smartphone devices, check yourself, go and do a Google search, New Jersey Public Register, the CRC, and you'll see for yourself.
State does all that, that kind of process.
Several, uh, several months ago, back in July, um, the township sold bond notes, bond anticipation notes, for seventeen point three million dollars. Uh, the lion's share of that was eleven point nine million for the shared services bond ordinance matter with the Board of Ed. Now, I assume that money, you sold the bond notes, I assume that money's been collected. That eleven point nine million, five million of it was supposed to be given to the Board of Ed to acquire the former Eastern International College, the remaining part of it was going to, at some point, be used to put up a shared municipal parking garage on Washington Avenue next to the middle school. My question to you, questions here are, have you received that money? A, and B, have you already transferred the five million of it, of that eleven point nine million, to the Board of Education to reimburse them for the purchase of the Eastern International College? Next question, uh, Mr. Frantantoni brought up the planning aid position, won't go into any names here, but I want to just confirm that this position is full-time, requiring the individual to be.
Mr. Fr, uh, Mr. Iacono, yes, it is a full-time position.
No, no, you can, I don't want my time to be, so I'm way down to a minute now, you can answer later, but I wanted to confirm that the position is full-time, requiring the individual to be in this building, at least, what is it, thirty, the third threshold for full-time is thirty-two hours or thirty, thirty-five hours, because according to this individual's Facebook site, he is still working full-time for Connect One Bank, and I wanna make sure that there isn't something going on here where he has now two full-time jobs, where this particular town hall job allows him to.
How's he need a job, Mr. Sheldon?
Well, I want you to confirm that, you can, uh, I wanted to also ask, I have thirty-three statements.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up now, you have thirty seconds left.
The budget for this calendar year, what is the status of it? Usually, starting with the first meeting, Mr. Iacono, in years not by, will announce that he's received, he's working with department heads, he's got all the documents in, that he's hoping within the next, uh, couple of weeks or month to, uh, present the details to the council. Where does it stand, and are you intent this year to make the deadline, which is normally, I believe, at the end of the market?
Always our goal, to make that deadline.
I, I, could you please let us know the status of the budget? Has it begun? Where are you at this stage?
Uh, your time is up, Mr. Sheldon.
I'm sure you're, if only you could drop a ton of bricks on me when the clock is running.
You're not that important to me, sir. Can Mr. Iacono?
We'll see Thursday, Mr. Melham.
Uh, so the position you're talking about is full-time?
Good.
Uh, the five million dollars was voted over to the Board of Education at the time of their closing, that's some time ago, they've had that already. And the last, um, at, at the next meeting, our CFO will be here, uh, he comes to every other meeting, so he will be here at the next meeting. The budget process started in probably late November, uh, all of the department heads have submitted all of their required paperwork, um, so again, similar to what the mayor said, we will try our best to make every deadline out there.
Anybody else for public commenting? Hearing none, I'll have to motion to close the whole hearing.
Make a motion.
The motion clo, motion to close and second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally. Depeany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stuhmover? Sorry, Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, consent agenda, I will take off number two.
Five and seven.
Five and seven, looks like two, five and seven, anybody else?
No.
Nope? Okay. I need a motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
The motion made and second to move the consent agenda, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Resolution two, roll call, need a motion?
Motion.